Okay, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, December the 20th, 2022, 5:30 special meeting of the town council.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call roll. Council member Cassisa.
Here.
Council member Avasio.
Yeah.
Council member Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here.
Next. We do have some members of the public in the audience.
Yep. Okay, so number two is open time for public comment that is not on the meeting agenda. Or is for the meeting agenda.
Is for the.
Okay, for the meeting agenda. Is there any comment?
We do not have emailed public comment and I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, so with that we'll close public comment. And we'll open item number three, which is council member training and overview of the laws of governing city councils.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. I'm Amy Ackerman, your town attorney. And I am going to introduce to you the top 10 rules for successful council members. Yes. Really big me. That is a lot of me. More me than needs to be. I know. Okay, we'll get started. I think what I'll do is do the presentation and then take questions at the end, but I'm always available for questions whether tonight or offline. So. I just, I just want to let you know that there is required training every two years for all electeds, including council members. It's AB 1234 or 1234, depending on how you say it. That's a really dense training. It is two hours of Brown Act conflicts, et cetera. This is not that. New council members, you will get that training from the League of Cities Conference and the rest of you have had it and we'll look to see when we're, I think we're not up again for another year. This is really just a quick overview of what I think you need to know to be successful. So the number one thing to know is a public office is a public trust. It's created in the interest and for the benefit of the people. Public officers are obligated to discharge their responsibilities with integrity and fidelity. If you remember this, that you are serving to fulfill the public's trust, you'll do fine. We have all kinds of laws that sort of implement this idea that you have the duty of loyalty to the city. And you act in the best interest of the city and you put, you don't put your personal interests ahead of the cities' interests when you are acting as a council member. So we have a whole lot of laws that govern your behavior, but really it's all about this idea that you're serving a public trust. When you keep that in mind, all of these laws make a little more sense and you'll be fine. So number two, know your role. This is really important. I've got kind of an abbreviated town organization chart. Cause I'm not that good at charts and this is the best that I could do. So you have the residents of the town. And they elect you and they are the constituents to which you answer and you are serving at in their interests. And then you have the town manager who you hire and fire. You have your town attorney who you hire and fire. And then there are the commissions, planning, park and rec, BPAC climate. I couldn't fit them all in there, but you get the idea. And you appoint the members and they serve as advisory to you. The one exception to that is the planning commission actually has the authority to make decisions. Now, sometimes those decisions get appealed to you, but on the whole, these are advisory committees now. Under the town manager are the town departments and the town staff that carry out the work in those departments. So we'll talk about what you all do. As I mentioned, you hire the town manager and town attorney. You make appointments to commissions and committees. You enact laws, which we call at the city level ordinances. Those bind the citizens of Corte Madera and you'll learn that ordinances take two readings to pass. The legislature thought it was a good idea to give everyone two readings in case you regret your first decision that it's not down there. You set policy and generally you do this through resolutions and those only require one reading, but generally that's setting the internal policy and rules for the city. And you exercise financial supervision, a very big part of your job. You're going to approve budgets. You're gonna approve expenditures, contracts, you're gonna review the financial audit. So you have a lot to do. Now, the town manager is the administrative head of government. So he is responsible for ensuring that staff carry out the policies that you set. But the town manager makes the decision about the manner in which that's carried out. He makes the determinations of how staff are allocated to meet the various needs of the town. And he administers the personnel system. He's responsible for hiring, firing, disciplining employees. So that's within his purview. Now we move on to understanding the town attorney's role. I think if I can click it. No, we're all gonna look at Adam's picture just a little bit longer. Here we are. So. That, that's my picture. Thanks to Photoshop. They brighten up a lot of teeth. And that is Ann Danforth, who some of you haven't had a chance to meet yet. She's the assistant town attorney. She primarily handles the planning commission and a lot of our land use issues. And I'm very, very lucky to work with Ann because she's a very experienced land use attorney. So the important thing to understand here is, and it's a little odd, my client is actually the town. It's not you, it's not Adam, it's not Rebecca, but it is the town. So how does the town act? Well, I will interact with the, with all of you individuals, the council town manager as they carry out their duties, but I don't have individual attorney-client relationships with you. Now generally, under the rules of professional conduct, when a client is an entity, then the highest decision maker makes the decision when it comes to a legal issue. Now, a lot of times that's going to be you as city council. Sometimes it's going to be the town manager. Employment decisions, if there's a decision about needing to discipline or dismiss an employee, he's gonna be the final decision maker. This is, idea is holds true for both public and private practice. Same thing in a corporation with an executive director. Although the state bar got so confused by public entities, they have a sort of thing of, well, we can't really figure out every situation in public law, which is so very helpful. But the main thing to note is when you speak to me, I will certainly endeavor to keep your confidence. But if it comes to a matter that's important for the city and I think there might be harm to the city, I have an ethical obligation to take it up. Most often this happens when I give conflict advice. I've naturally never had an experience where someone didn't want to take my conflict advice because there are penalties and I, my goal is to protect you from those penalties. But in the event someone didn't want to follow my advice, I would take it to council and have to take it up to the next level. Okay, number four. Power is vested in the council. Congratulations, you won your city council race. Actually, you have no power. You have power as part of the council. So it is the council itself that holds the power. It sometimes may seem like serving on the city council is very similar to the group projects you did in middle, middle school. Fortunately, not with this council because you guys function very well together, but there are councils where it's a little middle schooly. But the bottom line is the power is vested in the council. Council takes actions by voting. Now, you can, the council can delegate certain tasks to a committee or to an individual who generally will report back from time in the past. I think council has had a committee to do, a two-person committee to do some interviews for appointing members to committees and so forth. And that's fine. They come back with a recommendation. So if council delegates a task to you, that's fine. But otherwise, it is the council as a whole that, that holds the power. So that comes to number five. Don't interfere with staff. There is typically in most, either in charter cities, it's almost always in their charter. Or in general law cities, it is sometimes in the administrative code. Here we actually have it in the town manager's contract. So what this is, is the town council and its members deals with all the subordinate employees and officers through the town manager, or if the town manager designates someone. And you all don't give directions to individual staff. And this makes a lot of sense. For those of you who've ever worked for someone, sometimes having one boss is too many. But you can certainly imagine that having six bosses is too many. And it really is the job of the town manager to figure out how to deploy staff, how to use staff, what tasks to do in order to carry out your direction. Now, there are some exceptions to this. You can talk directly to me as your town attorney and you can direct me in any way. And second, you always have the purpose of inquiry. What does this mean? This means if you have concerns about certain tasks getting done or not getting done or certain departments and how they're functioning or not functioning, you can bring it to a council meeting, you can put an item on the agenda and you can exercise your power of inquiry because ultimately you're responsible for making sure that the work gets done that you're directing. You can't tell an individual staff member what to do, but you can actually put something on the agenda and say, town manager, we'd like to hear how this project is being carried out. So you retain the power of ensuring government is working effectively. But you exercise that through your role as a council and not by saying, hey, Rebecca, can you drop everything and pick up my dry cleaning? Okay, so we've talked about the various roles. So now we'll talk about how you carry out your role as council. So the first thing you have to do is comply with the Brown Act. I have a picture of Ralph M. Brown because I'm kind of a history fan. I'm like, who was this guy? Well, he was an assembly member from Modesto, 1943 to 1961. He was speaker of the assembly and he actually ended up serving on the Court of Appeal. Now, the reason why the Brown Act came to be is a reporter for the Chronicle did a 10-part investigative series about all the backroom deals that were happening with city councils. And so the Brown Act was born as a result of that. The key things to remember about the Brown Act is the public is entitled to have access to and watch you make decisions. So there's a lot of rules about the Brown Act, very picky. Where and how a quorum can communicate. We've gotten a whole bunch of new rules now about when a council member can attend remotely at a conference. There's agenda content and posting, public comment, closed sessions enforcement. You all are tremendously lucky because you have two amazing clerks who know, know the Brown Act inside and out. And they'll take care of most of the work for you. What I want to do right now is just kind of highlight the key points that you need to know. So. Oops, I went too fast. The key Brown Act requirements. You cannot discuss, deliberate, or tack, take action on items that are not on the agenda. Well, this makes sense because the public didn't know you were gonna do that. And so you've, you'll keep them out. Now, we have general public comment at every agenda and that's the opportunity for, for residents to come and speak about something that is in the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the particular agenda. So one of the questions is, so what do we do with that? So there's a couple of different things that you can do. One is if it's a concern that you think needs addressing, you can put it on the next council agenda. That way the public has noticed that you're gonna be discussing it. And everybody knows you're gonna be discussing it because you may have 10 people who are very, very concerned with one side, but you didn't know there were 100 people on the other side. Second is you can ask some questions with the speaker to make sure you're understanding the point that you're making. Third is you can ask the town manager, could you look into this and report back on this at the next meeting? So the fact that you can't discuss and deliberate doesn't mean that you can't let the member of the public know that you hear them and that you want to follow up with this. The next thing is a really important one and that is a quorum, which is three of you cannot discuss, deliberate, or take action outside a public meeting. Again, why? It, it deprives the public of their access to the decision making. So we have to talk a little bit about Sariana meetings, which is the term that the courts use. Uh, whoops. I got a little delay. Okay. Um, to when people reach decisions outside of a meeting and maybe it doesn't take, like you're not all having lunch together, but A talks to B, B talks to C, and everybody's kind of got the plan of how they're gonna vote. And that could be talking, emailing, texts, smoke signals, however it is that you're communicating. You want to avoid this. And the same thing, no group chats or anything like that because you're taking the public out of the equation. So that's a pretty easy one to follow. There are a few exceptions where you can actually be at an event together. Social ceremonial, a public meeting of another body or a conference. But at all of those occasions, you should refrain from gathering in the corner and discussing city business. And that's really a matter of the public trust. It doesn't look good, even if you're not making decisions. So just keep that in mind. Okay, a couple of years ago, the legislature decided that social media was gonna be a big problem for a council member. So we have an interesting little piece, a new addition to the Brown Act, it's been around about three years, I think. So, social media. You are free to engage with your constituents on social media if that is your, if that is how you like to do it. You can provide information, you can ask questions of your constituents, you can answer questions, no problem. The problem occurs if you're going to engage with other council members on social media. So don't respond to another council member's post, says the legislature. And don't use social media to discuss among themselves. They got so invested in this. Discuss among themselves includes communication or icons. You cannot like someone else's post if it has to do with city business. So think of social media as a way for you to communicate with your constituents, but not as a way to communicate with your fellow council members. Okay, the next one is comply with the Public Records Act. The California Public Records Act applies to both state and local agencies. And we start with the premise that any type of record, which is a document, which is a text, which is a chart, which is, it is the most broad definition you can imagine is public. Unless there's a very, an express specific exemption. And there are certain things, obviously, personnel records, people have a right to privacy, medical records, attorney-client privileged communications. But when you are acting as a council member, the easiest thing to do is to assume that anything you put in writing is going to be made public. If you keep that in mind, you will remember not to, you know, curse at your neighbor or do some of the other things that can come back. Every year I used to give this training to city departments and say, you know, it's, don't put something in there that you don't want to read in the newspaper and inevitably someone would do it, but there you go. You have been assigned a town email. Make your life easier and use that for all of your town communications. Why do I say this? Because you will, we will get a public records act request. You will need to search your emails. And it will make your life much, much easier. If you don't have to go through your personal email looking for some email you sent about town business, it just makes everything easier. I'm also gonna say that don't use your cell phone to text. And I know that's very hard for a lot of people, but it is actually to help your life out. Because texts are considered communications subject to Public Records Act. And so if you get a request, I don't know if you've ever tried to search your texts and reproduce them, but it is not easy. So I know that occasionally you may have some urgent need, but to the extent that you can use your city email, it will make your life easier. Question? Yeah.
Thank you, Amy. This is all super helpful. One question, and this is something that's come up a couple of times as we've received public email request, public record requests. And then Rebecca does, you know, her, her job and reaches out to all of us and says, hey, please search your email and send back to me any emails that you may have related to whatever the matter is about that's been requested. I have found that Outlook's search feature is really bad. And so I, I can't remember like what the specific matters were, but say like we get a public records request about like the housing element. If I search in Outlook, like I want to find like conversations I had with Adam about the housing element. If I search Adam Wolf Housing Plan, it'll turn up every email that has Adam, has Wolf, has housing, or has plan in it, which makes it like almost impossible to use for this, for this purpose. And so I was just wondering if you have any like tips or tricks, or if the law has like taken this into account, or if they're, you know, if, you know.
There is some software that assists with this and that might be something the town wants to look into getting because I agree with you. Outlook is really not made for searching stuff. I know some of the cities are using this. I think Granicus, which does agendas now also has a public record search feature. So that might be something we'll take a look at and see how useful it is and see what the cost is. Yes. Mayor Lee?
So to, to follow up, so at, at SFO in the past, when we've worked on large, you know, government projects, there can be specific keywords in the, in the, in the title of the email that are, that are keyed to more specific discussions and stuff for that search ability that we used to use for now, for like finding. But you have to agree as a party, when you're doing that type of business, like about an agenda item or whatever that you might need to reference in the future, but that, that's so complex. I don't know in such a small organization if it's really necessary.
Right. Plus it's hard because like if a constituent emails us about a matter, that's gonna need to be searched for later, like they won't know, you know, to include like our special keyword, you know, in a subject.
Right. But if you're, if you're talking to staff, which is really, then you would need to re, you know, when you reformulate it and respond back, you, you potentially could. And formulate it in the way that you understood it, right?
Yeah. There are a few tricks and I can, I can sort of collect them from some of our legal assistants are pretty savvy. And then, you know, shoot, shoot you an email about some of those, but I agree. It is sometimes, you know, you, you use your best efforts and it is sometimes hard to locate.
So that's what I was gonna ask you. From our perspective, it's pretty much as a best efforts type thing, right? To try to find the documents or to find emails?
Um, that is a complicated question. We have a duty to turn over all records responsive to a request. So we, and that is a duty to search. Now, sometimes we're, we are able to ask the requester to refine their search, to narrow the search. We've done this recently with some success because we sometimes will get an initial search that is just so broad that it's too much. So we do our best efforts to assist the Requestor in, in finding out, you know, what is it, what is it you're really seeking? How can we help you get that information? And we'll do our, our very best to do that to, to, to make it as least onerous as possible. But you know, the law is that we need to provide these records. So you know, we do, we do need to do that.
Just, just one follow-up that maybe just more hopeful than anything else, but we are transitioning to Office 365. So you all will be getting that new interface with your Outlook that may, I don't know, I'll cross my fingers. I haven't looked into it, but we can look into whether there's a better search function as, as we go to the cloud service that Office 365 has, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was gonna wait till the end, but I have a question on social media, which I think was the slide before. So for, for me, like for LinkedIn, I have my professional career type stuff, my work and stuff like that. And then I have a separate one. Do I have to create a separate one for just my role has in the town, has a council member? Or can I intermix? Can I put in my regular LinkedIn profile? I'm also a council member.
Oh, you can certainly list it in your LinkedIn profile. Definitely. My, you know, the, the basic thing is like, I know that there are certain council members who, you know, like to do have a Facebook page as a council member or something to that effect. And you'll want to just sort of dedicate something like that to your council work only because it makes your life easier for requests. And it also makes it easier to not comment on someone else's post that's related to city business, but be okay with wishing them happy holidays on their other page. Okay, so that's the Public Records Act request. Okay, the next tip number eight is keep confidential information confidential. While most of what we do is public, because we do it at public meetings and we do it with public records, there are certain occasions where we will do certain things confidentially. So the Brown Act, well, almost everything has to be done in public. There are some limited exceptions where we can hold closed, closed sessions. Most commonly, if the town is involved in litigation and we need to brief you on that litigation and maybe ask you to decide whether you want to settle or some litigation strategy. If we had to do that in open session, it would tip off the opposition, which would be in, not in the town's best interest. Evaluating the town manager or the town attorney, we have some rights to privacy, real estate negotiations and labor negotiations. If you were to give direction to labor. So there's a, a small category of activities where we'll go in closed session. You will also sometimes get attorney-client privileged memorandums or emails from me. And those are also confidential. Now, one thing to remember here is the privilege actually belongs to the council and not individual council members. So the Brown Act really has an express provision, a person can't disclose confidential information inquired at a closed session unless the legislative body, which is the whole city council, decides to disclose it. And that applies to staff as well if staff are in a closed session. I did a presentation with my colleague at the League of Cities Annual Meeting on councils creating chaos, how to stay out of trouble. And there have actually been a few lawsuits of some of that involve certain officials who have disclosed confidential information. Similarly, if I do an attorney-client privileged memorandum, the client would be council. Council would have to vote to disclose. And sometimes there's a reason for it and it's fine. But it's not up to individuals, it's up to the council as a whole.
Hey, Amy, I'm sorry. If I have a question for you that I'm just gonna email you the question. Is that attorney-client privileged? Or is it just because, or do I have to flag it that way? Or is it not because it's a simple question?
Right.
And I don't know if there's different levels of questions.
Generally, I would consider that attorney-client privilege. It would only, it would only go to the council if something was happening that I felt put the council at risk. So I often mark mine just because it's easier than if we get a public records act request to be, to very quickly understand that it is. So that's why I do it is just for convenience and also just as an alert to remind you guys, oh yeah, this is a privileged one. And I'll usually put something like, do not reply all, because I don't want you getting involved in a Sariana conversation. And that's just a reminder because it's so easy to hit that you think you hit the reply button and you hit the reply all. So it's, it's just a reminder to, oops, gotta, gotta make sure I'm hitting the right button. Okay, and then complete your Form 700. So we're gonna get a little bit into conflicts of interest, but not deeply into it. So one of the great joys of public service is filling out your Form 700. It is probably one of the, the least favorite activities, but why do you do this? So there's a couple of reasons. One is for you. This is a way for you to remind yourself, oh, these are my economic interests. So if anything involving these come up the council, I will remember this and then I will know that I need to talk to my town attorney. I will remember this, and then I will know that I need to talk to my town attorney and see if I need to recuse myself from a particular decision. It is also a tool for the public. The public is entitled to know where you might have conflicts of interest. And people do read these, particularly journalists, so make sure you take care and fill them out completely. And if you need assistance, you've got people to help you. Um, and so, that leads us to number ten, which is beware of conflicts of interest. So, conflicts law is really um, complicated, and there's a lot of it. And I just wanna flag to you, we have different kinds of conflict. So, um, Government Code Section ten ninety applies to all uh, public officials. You cannot participate in a contract in which you or your family has a financial interest. There are twenty pages, twenty to thirty things called remote interests, and then there's ten to twenty non-interests, and it's complicated. But this is just for you to remember. I know what my financial interests are. This looks like a problem. I'll talk to the town attorney. The Political Reform Act prohibits you from participating in any decision in which you or your family has a financial interest. So it's a broader category. Then we have something that's referred to as the common law conflict of interest. So lawyers uh, will use the term common law. If it doesn't, it's not written in a law, in a state statute, but it's developed through uh, legal opinions that appellate courts issue, and that, this is kind of a fuzzy little thing. It basically says, um, you can't participate in a decision where you have a divided duty of loyalty. The classic example is you are on the Board of Directors of a nonprofit, so you have a duty of loyalty and a fiduciary duty to that nonprofit. You sit on city council, you have the same for the city. The city decides, is deciding whether to give a grant or a contract to that nonprofit. Well, you, you can't pick which one you're served, so you recuse. Another example might be, the council is deciding whether to appoint a member of your family to, let's say, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Access Committee. Again, you've got your loyalty to your family member, you've got your loyalty to your town. So in that case, you're going to recuse yourself from the decision and uh, step, step aside from that one. Now, there's one other thing that is conflict-related, and this is most of the time, when you sit, you're like a legislature. You're making laws, you're making policies that affect the town as a whole. Occasionally, you will sit in what we call a quasi-judicial capacity when you are hearing an appeal or a decision related to an individual. How does this come up? Mostly from appeals from the Planning Commission. This council is very, very lucky. They have an outstanding planning staff and an outstanding planning commission, and so very few appeals come to you. That is not the case everywhere. But when those come to you, you have a duty to make sure you can act without bias to make the decision affecting the parties before you. So, it is not the same standard as judges. Judges are supposed to sit in their ivory tower and know nothing about the universe. Council members are supposed to know about your universe and your, and your um, community. But, if you are related to, close personal friends with, have an argument with, you know about the issue, you advocated for or against, you have a duty to kind of look inside yourself and say, can I be an unbiased decision-maker? And if you can, that's fine. But if you're like, hmm, I think I should sit this one out, that's fine as well. Um, you want to make sure that the parties before the council have, you know, a fair uh, a fair playing field in which to make a decision. So I'm gonna say this, conflict laws are really, really complicated, so I want to give you some red flags. Uh, one of, the one that probably comes up the most often in local government is if you own property, like your house, within five hundred feet or a thousand feet of the subject of the decision, we need to talk. Now, if you're within five hundred feet, you are likely not going to be able to participate. It's a pretty high standard. Between five hundred and a thousand feet, we have to look at particular factors. Will there be a traffic increase? Will there be um, effect on your property value and so forth? If you're talking about someone remodeling your home, and it's more than, uh, if you're between five hundred and one thousand feet, probably the factors are going to allow you to participate. But if someone is going to, to build a new development or a new mall or something really big, you may not have that opportunity. So, think about the five hundred feet and think about the thousand feet. That's a red flag for you. You also have an excellent uh, assistant city manager who is on top of this and will alert me pretty much every time a decision comes up, uh, uh, council member X. We gotta, you know, we gotta think about it. So, yes. I know the question you're gonna ask, and I'm gonna have to research it, and that's on my list, because I don't, there are rules that apply when you are a renter as opposed to a property owner. I don't have them memorized, and I think you, a month-to-month lease doesn't count, but a lease over a certain amount, so I have to get back to you on that one. Um, okay, so we know if you live or you, or your business property or your residence is, is that close, that's your red flag. Number two, there's a decision before you that can affect you personally. That's different from how it would affect another council member, or your business. Or uh, if your close family member's not extended, uh, or your source of income. That should be a red flag. Talk to your town attorney. Um, and then the last one again, if you're, if you've got parties before you and you're related to them, or you're, you know, closely entwined, talk to me. And just, as the rule is, if you have a conflict, you have to refrain from any participation. So it's not just the vote. It is discussions, it's questions. These laws define participating in a decision super broadly. So, um, it's not just, oh, I won't vote, but I'll engage in the discussions and I'll read all the materials and I do everything. It's, it's everything. You announce your conflict and then you step off the dais and exit the room while the decision is being, and then we have you come back in. So. I true in a rule number eleven is to enjoy. Um, your uh, residents, citizens have really given you a gift here. Um, this is a tremendous community and a really, really excellent town to be a part of. Um, you have probably the most intelligent, competent, and kindest staff I've ever worked with. And they are constantly doing great things here, and I think, um, I hope you really enjoy being part of it. Your uh, citizens have given you a, a great deal of trust in you. Uh, they believe in you, so do enjoy being part of this great community. And I am happy to take any other questions, and I just want you to know I'm always available for questions. Um, if anything comes up that I can be helpful with.
Is there any questions?
All right, I zipped through it, we'll get a little break.
Okay, so um, should I then close the meeting? All right, so item number four, adjournment. Um, so, Order of Business, Sanitary District Number Two meetings begin upon conclusion of the Court of Madera Town Council. The Town Council meeting will start at six thirty. Thank you. Uh, session closed.